Go ahead and call today's regular meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. Today's March 26th is around 10:03. Let the record reflect that we do have a form of five present and we have Councilman Brazil joining us virtually. At this point, we're going to go ahead and start our meeting and we're going to start with our invocation by Reverend Ernest Smith of True Believers Church, True Believers in Christ Church, which is in Ward Three. And immediately following that, ask if Councilman Harley will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise? Pastor.
We just want to say we thank God for this opportunity. We thank God for each and every one of us being here. And just before I get ready to offer this prayer, we just want to say we thank God again for allowing us to be here. And let us remember that it's all about God and the decision that we're going to make for this day. That all hearts and minds on Christ. Oh, heaven and father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time that the councilmen are going to get ready to come. We pray that their decisions be for the betterment of this city and for the peoples. Now be with them as they get ready to go into this meeting, in their hearts and in their minds. It's in your darling, dear son's name we pray and say, amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic that stands for one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Amen.
I'm sorry. Thank you Reverend Ernest Smith of True Believers in Christ Church and also thank you Councilman Harley. Colleagues, are there any opening comments? Any openings? Yes, Councilman, Vice President.
In honor of Women's History Month, I'd just like to open the meeting recognizing Ms. Betty Cook, Judge Larita Stokes, Councilwoman Barrett Simone, and Councilwoman Verge Lindsay. These are the women that have served on the Jackson City Council and because of them, I am here today. So, thank you to all of you.
And Councilwoman Vice President Angelique Lee. All right. Any other special openings? All right. We have one public comment and it is Mr. Lee Bernard on the cost of water. Mr. Bernard?
Thank you. Good morning. Again, my name is Lee Bernard. And as has came before you or come before you, with a few concerns I have related to the cost of water, when it, well, actually, it's related to the cost of water. And the main thing is sanitation. At one point, sanitation fee was $4.50 a week. Now it's $37 a month. And that went up last July or so. In February last month, there is a charge on my water bill here in Hines County of Jackson, and it's $20 a month. It started in February. I got a partial charge. And I'm just concerned about how we're adding items to the water bill and I don't hear much about it. And that is my, actually, it's a complaint for today as to how things keep being added to the water bill. And I would ask that you, as my councilmen and councilpersons, to take a look at that. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Bernard, before you leave? Mr. Bernard? Uh, Mr. Bernard, let me, the $20 you cited on your water bill, was that a access charge to the system? Is that what that was?
I think that's what it was. I did not bring a copy of it.
Okay.
But last month, it was thirty-some dollars. I called a number to the water company and they mentioned that it was just a partial bill. But according to my neighbors, it's a charge for the renting of the meter, which I think that needs to be looked at, that it should not be on my water bill.
So, there's an additional charge for water as well, I guess? Is that true?
Oh, yes. I'm not even talking about the charge for water. All I'm talking about now is sanitation charge and a charge for access to the water.
Yeah, okay. And that was $20 in your case?
And now, to my understanding, that it's going to end up being $20 each month.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Harley?
Yes, sir. I do have a lot of questions on that. I think the last time I heard from the third-party administrator, he mentioned that there was like a $40 charge. I forget the name he used for it. But an additional $20 charge, I'm not, I'm not seeing where that would come in. I do know that there's supposed to be a $40 charge, which is access to the system, the water system, somewhere around 40. And then, there's also supposed to be a usage charge that, based on your volume of usage, okay? Okay. And then, there's a solid waste fee.
Right.
And so, I'm, I'm wondering where this other charge could be?
Well, it may be the 40. It was 20 or 40. I didn't have a copy with me today.
Okay.
But there's an additional charge and I think it may have been 40.
Okay. There are two distinct charges that I'm aware of. One is the access fee, the usage fee. So whether you go out of town or stay in town, it's going to be there.
That charge will be there, according to what I heard from my neighbors. They said it was a rental charge. I called in and I could not get a good explanation for that charge.
And that is basically for, for, for being in the system.
Yes.
And then, there's a charge for your volume, okay?
Yes.
That means that, you know, and that may vary.
Right. I didn't address that charge. All I'm addressing is that additional charge.
Right. That additional charge is that...
And it's a fixed charge. It's not, but they charged partial in February because that was the first time they had it on there, was in February.
And then, there's a charge for the solid waste fee.
Yes. It was, it used to be $4.50 a week. Now it's $37 a month, which happened probably last July or August.
Yes, sir. Councilman Stokes?
I'm sorry. Mr. Bernard, I'm glad that you're here speaking on the concerns about water. We sent a letter to the third-party administrator concerning that sanitation fee and he responded, said that the council can have the authority. We had the votes to remove it off of the bill. I think you're saying that so many different things on the bill now, the bill getting so high, people can't afford it. But one concern people have, and I hope Mr. Wright can check to verify because we keep hearing different things, is that they're still estimating the bill. Now, might not be true, might not. I, I don't know, but it was my understanding that no bills are estimated anymore. Could we check with the third-party so we can verify? And I don't know if only bills still have estimating on there and it's a mistake. But if these bills are still estimated and as Mr. Bernard and others are saying, they might be high and they're getting higher. Now, I do see, and I think all of us see the work that's taking place and we appreciate that, but it's not going to do us any good to have work taking place and people can't pay these water bills. So, one question is whether or not they're being estimated, they're still being estimated. And the second issue is these different fees that's on there. I'm in a house by myself and I got a $450 water bill. You know, that's, that's pretty high. So, you know, people are concerned and they're talking more and more about these water bills. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
Yes, sir.
Perhaps in the future, we can also revisit that subject that Councilman Stokes mentioned, which is perhaps taking the sanitation fee and removing that to be a little bit separate, to be separated from that. That will keep your water bill down quite a bit.
One other thing, I do get a separate bill for $15. I think that's come from B&amp;G Utilities or somebody out there. But I have to check, do some more checking into that.
Yes. Buddy Brock owns the sewer and drainage system out there. And there's some conversations with legal some time back about how we deal with that because the city, our Public Works Department will not take it on until they bring it into compliance because they got a lot of devil laterals, as you know, in our laborhood, which is unacceptable. So, I appreciate you bringing that up, but that is something that we need to get with our legal department on.
Right. That was one I forgot, that the addition of $15 I have to pay too, which is a separate bill from the regular water bill.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Let's move to consent decree. I mean consent agenda. I'm sorry.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Summons.
Second. It's been moving property second on this item. Councilman Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two questions on, on the consent agenda. This item number three, I didn't understand what this, it says, "Resolution Adjudicating Costs and Penalties for Parcels Cleaned Pursuant to Resolutions Adjudicating the Same to Be Menace to Public Health, Safety, and Welfare on August 2nd of 2022," in a case number there. Can somebody explain to me what that item is because I didn't understand it? The other question was, I think we've got about $40,000 in expenses on these debris removal and cleanup areas and the, I'm curious where we, where our budget for that stands for this fiscal year on, on money we've got to continue to do cleanups. Thank you.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. Councilman, on the first question in terms of what these are, that's the administrative hearing, is simply the process, process that has to be followed in order to declare these properties to be what they need to be declared in order to then clear them and, and get them ready for other usage. And so, that's the, the general reference to the adjudicating costs and penalties for the parcels cleaned. In terms of the fund, I don't have the exact number, but I think what I heard this week was that, that fund was down to about 80,000 or 90,000 left of what could be used to continue to clear properties.
Eight or nine, right?
Eighty or ninety.
So, that, like this, I think we had 40,000 here.
It's approximately. They tend to run about five or 10,000 per, depending on the size and the condition. And I don't have any expertise on this, but to my, most of them were closer to 10 than five, 70,000 or 80,000 or that kind of thing.
So, we'd be getting pretty low for the fiscal year that ends in September.
I think that's right. And Mr. Malinbecker may be able to address the, the fund a little better if he can squeeze through there. But, but, yeah, I think the fund is down to 80,000 or 90,000 is what I had heard. Was that 84,000? Eighty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah. Is Ms. Dotson still here? Her name is on these things or is there somebody who's?
She is, she, her resignation is final and she's left the city as of about a week or so ago. I don't know if there's been an announcement about an interim yet or not from the administration.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Lee, thank you.
I just want to note for the record that I don't see any Ward Two properties, I haven't seen any Ward Two properties in the past three or four meetings. So, if you need a list of dilapidated properties or, or any properties that we consider to be a menace, I'd be happy to provide that for the planning department.
Councilman Harley?
Yes, Mr. Malinbecker. Along this item of, of getting money for, for these properties, we're down to 84,000 and that is for dilapidated properties. Are there any other funding sources that we can be looking at?
Yeah. So, I think Fidelis Malinbecker CFO, there are three buckets, I think you, you look at. One is this amount that's under the planning and developments, the general fund budget, which has approximately 84,000 left. Then you do have the, the appropriation from the legislators, particularly, I think, Representative Crudup, right? So, that's, that's one bucket there.
How much, how much?
I think?
250.
250, right.
And that's, and he's already have that designated for a particular area?
I think last time there was a discussion here, it was his district in particular.
Okay.
Right? And then, we do have the other grant funds. There is approximately 480,000 left, but there is an encumbrance of approximately 1.3 million dollars. This is the money that goes to the Blight Partners, so the Blight Elimination Program, Force of Calvary, Stupat, not Stupat, Habitat for Humanities and, and other partners that receive those funds.
So, we, so we don't have any, what's the bottom line on that, those funds?
Yeah. So, what is not encumbered, what's available is about 480,000. The 1.3 is already encumbered. So, that means there's, there's an agreement in place that those funds will go to those partners.
So, we have 480,000?
Roughly, in, in that fund.
Until the end of fiscal year, that we can, that we are, that's available for us.
Point, point of order. Since this is consent agenda, you know, if, if we're going to have those kind of separate discussions, we'll have to take this, take the items out individually based on the reading of this. So...
That's fine.
I would ask if you would send a memo over to everybody on what's left and then the other funds that could be used for this from other revenue sources within that department. Okay?
Make a motion, take one, that, Mr. President, please.
You're, you're free to make a motion, but Councilman Stokes?
Okay. I so moved that we take out number five.
Is there a second? All right. It's been moving property second that we remove item five, which is in Councilman's ward from consent agenda. Are we removing this for separate discussion or you just want to remove?
Separate discussion.
Are we removing this for separate discussion? All in favor of the removal of this item for separate discussion?
Aye.
All right. The item has been removed. Now we have consent agenda on the floor as amended. Any questions or comments about consent agenda on the floor as amended? All right. All in favor? All right. Consent agenda has passed. Now we would take up the item that has been taken up, number five. Clerk, if you would read number five?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson and Love Company Incorporated to demolish a structure, foundation, steps, and driveway to cut grass and weeds, to remove trash and debris, and to perform other work to remedy the conditions of state-owned property that constitute a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare according to Mississippi Code, annotated section 21-19-11 for KCE-23-323 located at 2148 Martin Luther King Drive, parcel 104-17-50.
So moved.
Second. All right. It's been moving property second on this item. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you. Lee, the concern I have is Councilman Foot gave us a, a map a few minutes ago concerning state-owned property. And this is a prime example of the concern that some councilmembers have, state-owned property, but the city's paying for it. The state has way more money than we have. And it seems like there should be a plan in place where the state can give to this city, this is a timeframe of we're gonna have all houses torn down that is owned by the state, all lots cleaned on a regular basis that's owned by the state. I can't prove it, but I can almost assure you that in other jurisdictions, other cities, that's a roadmap, probably making sure that state-owned property because all cities throughout the state of Mississippi have state-owned property. But in the City of Jackson, it's such an eyesore that people just can't believe the reality of this. That's the first concern. Then the second one is on, on Martin Luther King. You know, we experience in seeing more and more overgrown lots and, you know, you name it after a giant in the world, a giants, but the condition of the street seem as though there's no love for Dr. King. So, we think that somebody should get on the stick and make sure that we can, we can allow the street to show the love for Dr. King in his name. Visitors come to make it was home and to Freedom Corner and they drive down Dr. King Drive and overgrown lots, abandoned buildings that should have been torn down, fires that burnt structures that still standing that should have been torn down. And the vast majority of these situations are state-owned properties. Could we maybe get a audience? I think they have talked to the city before, but there's no progress. It's a lot of talk and it seems like it's one-sided talk, but there's no direct action or plan of action where money is earmarked. We have $3 million that we're gonna spend in the City of Jackson each year. Thank you.
Councilman Harley?
Yes, Mr. President, and I, and I appreciate any boundaries here if you can point them out if I stray off course here. But my colleague is absolutely correct. A lot of these state properties have been used for criminal purposes, abandoned houses, overgrown lots, et cetera. And the state, it seems as though they have no type of responsibility here. I've spoken with a member of this, of the state, the gentleman that sells the properties. He said by law, the state doesn't, isn't required to come back out and clean properties. By law, the state isn't required to tear down houses and other things. Well, it should be, it should be noted that by law, they are creating a public health hazard. I mean, the same as any other individuals that we take to environmental court, we can't take the state to court. And they're doing the same thing, creating a public health hazard. They're also presenting a situation that decrease our property values on our streets. So, we have to take something forward to the state. And I'm not sure if your memo or whatever can address it. I thought perhaps we had, one of the concerns brought up was the lobbyists. And when we had our legislative agenda, I'm hoping that that was one of the things that was included in there, is to ask the state to go ahead, set aside money from the sale of all the properties around the state, give back to the municipalities a percentage so that municipalities can go out and help keep these properties clean and, and don't be a public health hazard. So, frankly, I'm not, I don't want the state to participate in crime. But when they leave these properties and stuff there abandoned, then that's exactly what they're doing. And somebody need to call them on it. But in a rate, I look forward to, to your response and your actions, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Drew, Drew, turn your mic.
If there's any specific questions other than what's been mentioned, if you'll provide them to me, I'll try to address them as best I can. I think it's probably a legislative issue ultimately.
It is.
But be glad to help with that.
Councilman, Vice President?
Drew, there are five properties in this consent agenda that are state-owned and it's concerning to me because they need to be held accountable. We are held accountable because they're in our wards and we have to, you know, justify the conditions. And we're diverting money that we could be used, could be using for other things to fix up their properties. So, I would like to see this.
Sure. Understood. I, I want to appreciate the spirit of my colleagues for bringing this out and pushing this forward. Drew, if we can do this, maybe going five years back, I think that this would help. If we can line out the difference of what we've spent in the past five years on state-owned properties, whether it was demo or grass and weed, I think if we were able to show what we are spending on state-owned properties, then it may not be too late, Dr. Omari, to get a letter over to the state just to see, just to let them know, this is what we've been spending, you know, this is what we've been spending on our own. But look, and I'm, I'm sure that, that amount will probably be very high as the amount that we're spending on these state-owned properties so that they can bear some responsibility to maybe job, Mr. King, some type of reimbursement legislation to cities that have to undertake this. All right. Any other questions or comments on this? All right. This is item five, which was taken out. All in favor? All right. Item carries unanimously. All right. Thank you. I'm sorry. Item carries unanimously. Let the record reflect, I think my last announcement is that we had a form of six. Let the record reflect, we do have a form of seven. All right. Introduction of ordinance. We did vote on consent agenda, that's all.
Yes, we did. I'm sorry. As amended?
Yeah. We, we had to take that out separately.
Okay.
All right. Introduction of ordinance, item 11.
Ordinance amending the City of Jackson Classification Compensation Plan to add the job classification of Deputy Chief Financial Officer at a pay range 50, Liaison Officer at a pay range 34, Procurement Operations Manager at a pay range 34, Fixed Asset Manager at a pay range 31, Vendor Equity Coordinator at a pay range 28, and Fiscal Operations Manager at a pay range 34.
All right, colleagues. This is an introduction of ordinance before it actually is considered or taken up two weeks from now as an adoption. Are there any questions on this? There are some questions. Director Martin. I'll yield to you, Vice President.
Toya, are you able to give us a brief description of everything you're, every position you are looking to fill and then the pay range?
Yes. Toya Martin, HR Director. This ordinance is, you know, we've been talking a while about the restructuring of the Department of Administration and how we're going to centralize the entire procurement process. I know Mr. Malinbecker has made presentations to the council about how that will work. Also, we had Mr. Brent, who is our Harvard Fellow. He's come in as well and made presentations to you all about this new restructuring, how it will work, how it'll look. And this is just the beginning part in that in terms of creating these positions that we need in order to make this process work. So, the Deputy Financial Officer, that person will be the person that will support Mr. Malinbecker as the CFO. We currently have a Deputy CAO classification, but we don't have a Deputy CFO. So, this is the work that we need to do in order to create that. Also, the Liaison Officer, the city is planning on hiring two Liaison Officers. One of those positions will be working directly with the employees of the City of Jackson in terms of training those employees on how to enter invoices, how to assist the vendors. Also, the other Liaison Officer will be designated to help vendors. Like currently, right now, we have, if, if there's a vendor who is not, who, whose invoice hasn't been paid, what they're doing now is they're reaching out to the department, right? They're emailing somebody in the departments about their invoices. This person will be the person that will work directly with the vendors. If they have any questions about anything going on with their payments or about processes, this Liaison Officer will be the person that they will contact. So, we're gonna have two. One would be on internal in terms of training our employees and the other one would be working directly with the community. Procurement Operations Manager, this manager will be the person that will be managing the whole procurement process. We need somebody who is skilled in terms of our procurement laws and also our state laws as well. The Fixed Asset Manager, we currently don't have a Fixed Asset Manager. This person will be responsible for managing all of our assets and capital that we currently have. Right now, we have inventory controllers that are working specifically in the department, but we don't have a manager who, who is responsible for overseeing all of our inventory. And the Vendor Equity Coordinator, this person is, as well, will be assigned to work with our vendors to make, make sure that diversity and, and everything is being equitable in terms of our processes when it comes to our vendors. And lastly, the Fiscal Operations Manager will be the person where they will be managing all of our, providing oversight to all of our fiscal officers because currently, the way our... Because currently, the way our structure works is all of the fiscal offices report to the directors of the department. And the reason why we're having, we are trying to centralize this is that all of our fiscal offices will report to one person. Uh that a person will be providing oversight and also ensuring that all of our fiscal operate officers are trained and um in terms of invoices and also how to enter contracts and everything dealing with munis.
Question.
Yes, sir. Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. My first concern is, uh have you put a price to all these positions yet? How much you estimate it's gonna cost? And secondly, where we're gonna get the money from?
So the last council meeting, if I'm not mistaken, uh that order was presented to you all where we they uh Department of Administration um outlined every position in terms of what fund, what they was moving to what fund. That was on the last council meeting. I can't remember what the total was. If somebody can give me that information.
Five something. Yes.
Five thousand?
Five, no, no, five hundred and twenty thousand.
Five hundred and twenty thousand. That's the total that we're gonna need in order to be able to create these uh positions. Where is the money coming from?
Where is the money coming from?
So Councilman Stokes, uh the the last meeting, uh last week, uh we were able to move money internally uh to satisfy some of the positions. Um and as we've communicated before, the uh the the price tag that we looked at uh previously was about five, five between five twenty to six hundred. Uh and we were going to request for a budget amendment to fund those positions in the new fiscal year. Uh but what we did last week, we were able to identify over two hundred thousand internally uh that that we moved to uh accommodate uh some of the salaries uh of the positions uh that that will be activated before the uh close of the fiscal year.
Where where did the money come from internally? I think that's that's the question that's being asked.
Right. So this was a a professional services. Um and this is uh the Department of Administration miscellaneous uh for professional services, right?
All right, uh we'll go with Vice President Lee, then we'll come back there.
Toya, um so this is almost about six hundred thousand dollars plus insurance.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering, we still have.
It's already included in that in that dollar amount.
This is included in the dollar amount.
Yes.
Okay. And then I see that we have a vendor equity coordinator. Where are we with our disparity study that would mandate this across the board? Why aren't we spending money on that just to to make sure that black contractors have a a seat at the table?
Yeah, so and and the disparity study has not been conducted as we're aware, uh the the cost, right? Um I mean, it can be anywhere from two hundred fifty thousand to a half a million dollars. Uh what has been shared from uh some of the council members is a way to uh collaborate with um like the airport or even the county, uh if if that could be done. Uh I know there was a question that legal department was exploring, uh whether uh that could be uh done and and enforceable. Uh not not sure where we are. This was Tori had been working on that. Uh yeah. Um but yes, so the disparity study does uh need to get done at some point. Uh however, it does not really, that that should not prohibit the city from making concerted efforts uh to ensuring that some of our practices incorporate uh diversity, right? Um but in terms of some of the mandates, it will require the disparity study to be completed.
All right, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I can support any new positions, uh I'm gonna have to see some of the in some of the engineering positions that Public Works filled. We don't have near enough engineer.
We have none.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes, sir. Of course. Yeah, I do. Uh Jackson Police Officers. Are the officers with Jackson Police Department paid more than Capitol Police? And the reason I ask, I got in a big argument. I'm I'm thinking that we're paying the most, and I'm arguing with people, we paying the most why.
We we were Councilman Stokes, but I believe they just gave them an increase.
But we were paying the most.
We were paying the most.
Can we get some kind of a memo to our ordinance that JPD must be the highest paid law enforcement agency? I won't say in the state, but I'm gonna say region. Because we're gonna keep losing office, that's why a lot of office going at Capitol Police. Uh how much of a difference in pay?
I I can provide you that in a in a memo, Councilman Stokes. I'll get you that in a memo.
Thank you. If you if you gonna do that, you might as well write for the fire department, too, 'cause I see home. I see home. I think it was voted on to be a joint thing with police and fire. Okay, all right. Uh this is again an introduction of ordinance. Uh Mr. Malinbecker, if if you could send a memo, um just, I know that there's been a presentation and everything, but just kind of send a memo outlining this again. But then also, just to keep there from being un- any unreadiness, kind of explain the need for the consolidation and how it will help streamline things. But then also, in addition, uh I think there may be some also some concern about the grants division in those positions if they've been filled, you know, as as we begin to look at this. And then also, um as far as disparity study, you are aware that there's an ordinance that says that the city shall conduct one every five years.
I was not aware of that.
Yeah, yes, and we we like year eleven now. All right. But there there's orders that says that the city shall conduct one every five years. And I believe the previous person that did it uh before the executive order that we're still under um uh is willing to, you know, help us out with that. Councilman Harley, you had something for comfortable?
Uh yes, sir. Just wanted.
Well, it's not a vote, I'm sorry, it's introduction ordinance, but go ahead.
Okay. Just wanted to uh, you know, a couple of things. One is uh really would like um some type of follow up from our legal department on their efforts uh to uh to merge with other uh entities to make sure we get that disparity study done. Again, uh you know, we can wish, 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 but we need to have something in writing. And if it's excellent ordinance, we doubly need to have that thing done. And if there's a cheaper way around it, you know, I think I was there at the airport when we did it there. And uh you know, that's the way to go, to keep us from getting in trouble with the law. Um and there was one other issue. Um one other thing is, we'll, I'd like to see perhaps Mr. Malinbecker in your memo, if there's anything to address, are these folks going to, are we gonna have to hire additional uh folks under them, uh you know, in order to for them to be successful in their that position? I'm concerned about, you know, the top heavy uh and um in management, uh and that it absolutely have to be necessary, uh because there's a lot of uh folks down at the lower tiers that we need to be focusing on to on that. So thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
All right. Um so that's introduction. Uh if there's no need to put this in committee, colleagues, this will roll over uh for adoption. Yes, sir?
Will you, um do you think perhaps to have more discussion on it, we need to have it in a committee?
If that's the was the body to put it in finance committee. What say you?
Say yes.
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 Gresel. Stokes, you say yes?
No.
All right, Gresel say no. But what's what say you?
I say no.
What say you, Stokes? I'm not on finance committee, but I think it need to go in committee.
The reason I'm bringing up, Mr. President, is that I believe that we need to have uh a good understanding and and some more questions.
All right, I I'll I'll put it in committee, finance committee, and we'll we'll try to have discussion on this before it it's time. Make sure you keep me in remembrance of this clerk before uh this rolls over for adoption. So we'll stick with the same schedule, we'll just have a committee meeting before that. All right. All right, so let's go to item fifteen.
Order ratifying the acceptance of coding and supplement service for the Code of Ordinance for the Department of Municipal Clerk and authorizing payments to Civic Plus LLC in the amount of one thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moving properly second on this. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir?
Uh just uh please, uh and since we didn't have a planning uh meeting yesterday, I just wanna get some of the some of the nuts and bolts of what this will in fact bring for your department and for the taxpayers of Jackson.
Angela Harris, Municipal Clerk. So what this is, is in it, every time you pass a ordinance, we um we send it to Civic Plus so they can codify it and supplement it and they put it on the um website. So people, citizens can go out there and uh look up the ordinances that's passed online. So that's what this is. This is a payment. We do supplications twice a year, June and December. So this invoice is for all the ordinances that were sent from June to December of twenty twenty-three.
And there is a a link to the website?
It is.
Okay.
It's on the website.
Great.
Jackson Code of Ordinances.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, just 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 one quick question. Um procedurally, uh does this need to be a ratification or should this be something else? And the and the reason why I'm asking that legal is this, all right, the contract started on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, correct? When is the con- and the contract is for one year?
Yeah, it it ended. It expired. And so my what I I've been, I was trying to work on get it renewed, but my account representative left and I have been having a tam, trying to get somebody. So I recently was able to get someone to respond, so we're working on uh getting a new agreement.
I don't think nobody has any pause with paying this 'cause it gotta be paid. I just wanna make sure procedurally legally, we're doing this right. If this is a contract that ended in twenty-three.
No.
It says it says whereas on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, it says they entered into a one-year contract. So one year from October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two?
No, looking uh.
Is this wrong?
Yeah, it could be. Look at the, it should be attached in your packet, the agreement, the agreement, the new agreement that we brought before you, it was in twenty twenty-three and it expired twenty twenty-four.
So the.
February twenty.
Yeah, February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four is when it expired.
So the whereas the first one is wrong, is not twenty twenty-two? I don't understand, 'cause it says on October twenty-fifth, twenty-two, the governor of the city executed the the mayor one-year agreement, which means that that would be based on this. I'm not, I'm not trying to play no got you, I just want things to be legal and right, right? And so.
Uh huh, yeah, and it went.
It expired twenty twenty-three. It expired twenty twenty-four, but it that's two years.
We we came, I came before the council in twenty twenty-three and it was for one year.
If we could verify this is a uh error, then we could just.
So that's what it's referencing. Do they have this before them, the minutes? So the date is correct?
Yeah, but look at, look at the agreement.
Okay.
Yeah. Don't you, do you have the agreement or copy the agreement as the needed?
We do, but on the.
We're just trying to get the order.
In your first whereas, you have a one-year.
I I think what happened is originally, it came before you in twenty twenty-two, that was for one year. Then we got it renewed in twenty twenty-three and it expired, it was for an additional year and it expired uh February the twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-four.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make an amendment to change the first whereas to reflect that it was renewed on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. All right, it's been moving properly second uh on the renewal, as stated by Vice President. Uh but I think we're tracking, is is that fine? Attorney Mark here, you tracking? Did you have something, Dr. Omar?
No, I was just gonna suggest that they amend it.
Just make the amendment? Okay. All right, the the other thing is after ratification, since the contract has expired, uh this was supplemental service, meaning it was extra service outside of the scope of the contract. Am I correct or wrong?
No, that the contract, that is part of it for them to codify and supplement, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, all right, well, we're good then. All right. Any other questions or comments? Here another, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All right, the item is on the floor as amended. Uh all in favor of the item as amended? All right.
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. All right, now, let's see. This is the only other one we needed to do before claims?
Yes.
All right, all right, claims?
Order approving claims appearing at pages two nine zero to inclusive thereon on municipal docket of claims in the amount of one million three hundred seventy-eight thousand six hundred fifteen dollars and seventy cents for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
Second.
It's been moving properly second uh on this item. Uh Mr. Malinbecker, if you if you, before we go to the members, go over the hot ones first.
Okay. Good morning once again, Fidelis Malinbecker, CFO. Uh the four largest uh claims on this docket as follows. The first is hempel construction in the amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents paid out of fund one seventy-three, one percent infrastructure tax. This is for the Mill Street Bridge replacement. The second is Metro Jackson Convention in the amount of two hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents paid out of fund two zero three, Jackson Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is the payment for uh taxes to uh Visit Jackson. The third is Atmos Energy in the amount of eighty-four thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty-seven cents paid out of fund one, general fund. This is for the collective customer accounts for February. And the fourth is Grace House in the amount of seventy-seven thousand thirty dollars and eighty-six cents paid out of fund one twenty-two, Hapwire Grant. This is for the twenty twenty-two Hapwire Grace uh Grace House funding. And that concludes the report for the four largest claims.
All right, any questions on that before we go to the amendment? All right, Mr. Malinbecker, go ahead with those proposed amendments.
Uh the proposed amendments, uh we have two. One is a payment to Civic Plus LLC in the amount of one thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. And this is the order that you just passed.
All right, is there another one? I thought you said it was two.
Right. The the second one is uh Westland Plaza in the amount of twenty-nine thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh this is uh three invoices for rental payments for uh JPD.
You sure that's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a note that was three, too. You sure?
Three invoices?
That's what I had a note of.
The, yes, there are three invoices and we'll be supplying.
Okay, so it's the three invoices, okay.
Right, they're just adding.
I got you, I got you, okay. All right. You got a motion by Councilwoman Lindsey?
Second.
It's been moving properly second amendment to claims. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Now we have claims on the floor as amended. All in favor? On claims on the floor is amended?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? All right, uh claims passes five, two. Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh hempel construction, uh I see some work taking place on State Street uh near High End and the library. Where the library, are we replacing sewer lines? Well, it look like it's major.
Yeah, so so that work, I think, is CCID. All right, go ahead.
So let's let's do this, wait till we get a public works item on the floor and then deal with that, 'cause we don't have nothing on the floor right now. All right, we'll come back to it, Mr. Stokes, when we get down the floor. Hey, Rob?
Order approving gross payroll including payroll deduction claims numbered three-zero-zero-four-five-two and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved. Second.
It's been moving property second on payroll, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Daniel Jackson.
Aye.
All right, payroll passes seven-zero, item fourteen.
Order, order amending the City of Jackson Pay Plan to change the range of controller from range thirty-three to thirty-five and assistant controller from thirty-one to thirty-four.
So moved.
Second, it's been moving property second on this item, any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Councilman Stokes?
Uh, is this the item that's going to be used to help?
This, this item reflects two of the employees that are in finance that basically do, uh, a big bulk of the work.
So are this going to help us streamline the the item that you've been mentioning, Doctor, trying to make sure?
Yes, Toya Martin, HR Director, yes, this item is going to be followed by several items later on, not later on, but in other council meetings. This is a part of the restructuring as well of the Department of Administration. So this goes along with the creation of those positions and we are currently tr- uh, starting from, uh, office to office. So right now, uh, we have the Controller Office and as Councilman Banks says, they have, uh, a large responsibility in that area. Um, and we're going to follow those with other, uh, amendments as well, the Budget Office will be next and then we may have the, um, Purchasing Office. So this goes along with the bigger, the bigger item, which is to centralize.
Go ahead.
Give us the overall goal.
Okay, the overall goal is to first create, restructure the department so we can create these positions in order for us to be able to centralize our procurement process, get it to the point to where we're not, uh, late paying invoices, get us to the point to where we're, you know, uh, correctly aligning the current positions that we have over in that department to make them equitable to all the positions in the Department of Administration.
Did we do a study that suggested these steps?
Absolutely, we did, um, we did an overall study and that's the work that, uh, Mr. Brent, the Harvard Fellow has been helping us with since he's been here, so yes, it has been a study done in terms of our procurement process.
Thank you.
Councilman Harley?
Okay, so, I think my caffeine needs to get in, but let me ask one question, uh, some of the issues with our, uh, our office coordinators, controllers,
Yes.
Uh, controllers, um, is in fact the alignment, the way we have it organizing?
Yes, not our controller, but our office coordinators and fiscal officers.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there any type of, um, as we create this position, are there any type of punitive measures in case to make sure that, that these folks are following, following in line correctly and doing the right thing at the right time?
Absolutely.
Because we have serious, uh, you know, financial issues when it comes to that.
Right.
So.
I agree, and that's, that's the, you know, that's where we're trying to get with this, we have to, we, we realize that we, our office is just not, was just not structured the way it needed to be structured. So that's the reason why the work has been done with the study and cr- uh, reaching out to other cities, looking at what they were doing and creating these positions so that, um, what we realized, a lot of the employees, they did not understand what they were doing, so a lot of training is going to be done by our Fiscal Operations Manager, hopefully we can get that approved through you all, um, a lot of work is going to be done with our, uh, Procurement Manager as well so we can get to the point where we are paying our bills on time and everything can be streamlined correctly.
And there are, um,
And there are going to be accounta- accountability measures in place as well, yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Lee?
Ms. Martin, do we already have a controller or are we looking to hire one?
No, we have a, we currently have a controller and assistant controller, yes, you're welcome.
Any, any,
Yes.
That, that basically.
What she said, yeah.
Yeah, any, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Did I see your hand, in favor?
You hadn't, you hadn't asked for the other.
Okay, opposed, all right, item carries six-one.
Thank you.
All right. Item sixteen.
Order authorizing the mayor to amend four internal site license agreements and three master agreements with all tail corporation doing business as Verizon Wireless to extend the term of the agreements and increase licensing fees at seven tower sites within the City of Jackson.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved a proper second on the side, any questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
The last, next to the last sentence said increasing fees.
Mm-hmm.
Wanted to make sure, because we had a debate sometime ago about us increasing some of these fees.
Hit Keith, hit, hit the, hit the button. Okay, morning, Keith Harris, Telecommunications Manager, what was the question?
Increasing fees.
On some of these sites, uh, you'll see that, uh, we've got three sites, uh, I've increased the fees by point five percent on, um, four of the sites, five of the sites. Two of the sites, I decreased fees point five percent because they, uh, are starting to redline some of our sites. Uh, I've got one site which is on Watkins, let's see.
Lake Heiko.
Fifty-three eighty-three Watkins Drive, that's Fire Station Twenty-One, they decided not to renew that contract and I've been getting a lot of pushback from, um, Verizon and T-Mobile, some of the other carriers on some of the sites and the revenue, so I kind of like try to give a little bit on some and increase on others.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously, next item?
Order ratifying the acceptance of disposal of electronic equipment for the City of Jackson's Information Technology Department and authorizing payment to Next Tech Operations LLC in the amount of four thousand two hundred dollars.
So moved. Second.
It's been moving property second on the side, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Councilman Harley?
Yes, sir. Okay.
That's me.
Okay, that's you too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, just, uh, when we're talking disposal, we're talking waste material, uh, have, have you uh, coordinated with the Solid Waste Division, I know they have the Environmental, um, Service Center over here that, um, dispose of electronic equipment as well?
I'm not sure, uh, if they, uh, this was in conjunction with another, two divisions, uh, Telecommunications and IT. So, um, at least at IT, we had a, a stockpile of light bars from old JPD cars. Uh, we had a lot of old cell phones and a lot of, uh, EDAX is what they call it, which is the old radio system that, uh, J-Train and Public Works used to use. So we had a lot of stuff, uh, along with, I don't know what exactly that, that, uh, IT Department had, but I know they had computers, but I don't know if it was a sur- too much of a surplus for them to take or not.
Yeah, it probably was, when you mentioned light bars and stuff, that's, that's pretty much out of that range, but, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order ratifying previously executed amendment to the Yamaha Motor Finance Corporation's Equipment Schedule Number two-one-seven-nine-seven-nine and amending previous order that was approved by the City of Council on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two to reduce the number of leased golf carts by fifteen, thereby lowering the current monthly payment from four thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents to three thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on the side, any comments or questions?
Question?
Yes.
Uh, Minister, the, um, we had at one time sit on golf carts. Uh, now we phasing the sit on carts out, uh, are we leasing? What percentage do we have with sit on versus lease golf cart?
Adrian Mohammed, uh, Parks and Recreation, we still own, uh, those same golf carts that you mentioned, some have been phased out due to, uh, it would cost more to repair them, so they was part of turning them in and uh, getting a new fleet that we're cycling in now.
But the city bringing on some golf carts that we own?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because the reason I ask, uh, I don't mind leasing carts because I think the key thing is not having carts breaking down.
Yes, sir.
You're in a golf cart where you're playing golf, whatever, it's rough when they break down, I know we got people who are trying to work on them and pulling them in and everything else. So how many total golf carts do we own, well, you can give me a memo on that.
Yes, sir.
Do we own versus how many are we leasing?
Yes, sir.
I can just get a memo, thank you.
So I can give you actual facts, and the benefit of leasing is that, that very same thing what you're talking about, Councilman Stokes, if we have any type of mechanical problems to take place, they'll be covered under the lease as opposed to sending out, trying to get it fixed on our own. Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, Councilman Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President, yeah, uh, Dr. Mohammed, the, what is, uh, how are we doing on revenue from, um, the carts that we, you know, when people take them out and, you know, pay their cart fees, it's, what's the, what's your average revenue?
I need to get that actual figure for you, uh, Councilman Foot, I will be giving you a guesstimation at this point, um, in which everybody knows me, I don't like to do, but I'll be sure to get you that information by closing business tomorrow, sir.
I'd be curious how, how, if it, if it covers the cost of leasing the vehicles or is it a profit item or just, you know, where, where the revenue versus our cost is?
In comparison to last year, I can tell you that it covered where we were and it, and it put us in the black as well and we're well on track to being able to do that again this year, but let me give you the actual figures if that's what you're looking for.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President, in closing, Grove Park, um, do you foresee us opening it back up? Late spring, early summer, uh, uh, going to next year?
I would say going into next year, this, early summer, uh, Councilman Stokes, you know me, I'm not going to lie to you, no, sir.
I, uh, I'm laughing about it because when you have these kind of facilities up times in neighborhoods, you run into issues. I was coming to, uh, eleven day row, a young lady was walking up the street with the flag that you have in the hose. That she, I know she didn't know what the flag was for and everything, but, you know, I remember you telling us that at Grove Park, people were breaking in and doing all kind of things and some kind of way we're going to have to do an awareness, announcements on radio or something, letting people know that you cannot just, just take, um, flags, golf course equipment and just go in and break things and tear them up because it causes it in number one, and number two, if it becomes so expensive, then they end up closing them.
Yes, sir.
And that's what they don't want, close, golf courses closed, city services in their neighborhoods, so, you know, keep up the good work, uh, meet with some of the churches in the area because we might can get some churches to also help, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
I do.
Yes, Council, Councilwoman Lee?
Dr. Mohammed, since I have you here, um, it's off topic, but I was just wondering how are we with, um, recruiting for lifeguards and do you think our Tugalo Pool will be open this summer?
The recruiting for lifeguards is coming slow, but it's much better than where we were this time last year and yes, ma'am, the Tugalo Pool will be open, even if I demand it myself.
Uh-oh.
But no, ma'am, we'll have lifeguards there to be able to manage.
I get to pick out your trucks.
Councilman Harley?
Yes, I just want to take an opportunity to thank you, um, you know, we did a tour of the, of, um, Livingston Park.
Yes, sir.
Place looks spectacular, look forward to other things that you're going to be doing in that area, but just, uh, complete overhaul and I wanted to thank you for, uh,
Thank you for your support and, and give a whole praise to the hard-working staff of Parks and Recreation, maintenance department, appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously, next item?
Order authorizing approval of professional services and payments to Mississippi State Department of Health for inspections of the water heater at Virgil Pete Middleton Community Center, thirty-nine seventy-one Flag Chapel Road, Jackson, Mississippi.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order requesting approval of future services and payments to Blount Photography LLC for the Easter Egg Hunt Event on Saturday, March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, at the VA Legion, Legion Softball Complex.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on the side, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Go, go ahead.
I just want to reiterate, please, 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 we're very excited about this taking place Saturday and we hope that you bring your family and friends, um, for all children to come out and enjoy the Easter Egg Hunt, we put a lot of work in it and we're looking forward to everybody being out. In addition, we'll be showing a movie at the zoo from four PM to six PM, that's going to be family free, uh, oriented, uh, on the big screen that we have for everybody to come out and the charge is absolutely free, so come on out, we're doing great and exciting things at Parks and Recreation.
Good job.
Thank you, Council President.
All right, all right, the vote has been counted, it was unanimous, uh, item twenty-one.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims against the City of Jackson in the matter of Angela Griner versus the City of Jackson, John Doe Persons one through three and John Doe Entities one through three in the Circuit Court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District Civil Action Number nineteen dash five-six-one dash ELP.
So moved, second.
It's been moving property second on the side, any questions or comments?
Question, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, without going into, having to go into executive session, can you just give us a, a synopsis of the facts?
Yes, sir, Drew Martin, City Attorney, so this was essentially a, a motor vehicle accident, uh, the driver, Ms. Griner, uh, ran into a big gravel mound, it's about five feet tall, it was dark, uh, there weren't warning signs around, vehicle flipped and she sustained multiple body injuries out of that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries unanimously, item twenty-two?
Order reviewing and continuing August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, state of emergency.
So moved. Second.
It's been moving property second, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order reviewing and continuing state of emergency.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries unanimously, first item discussion, Lake Heiko, Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President, Lee, could you help us with this? Um, we're getting, we're receiving calls concerning Lake Heiko and it started several years ago when they first drained the lake. Now it's dirt is being, uh, filled in, in the lake and everybody's trying to find out what's really going on as they state different areas and when there's no communication, then it make people wonder, is it something that we should know?
So I, I tried to pull some information about this this morning when I saw the discussion item on the agenda and I wasn't able to get very far, um, does the city still own that property there or is that, there's a public school district? Right, so that's what, that's what it looked like. Yeah, so, so I guess my question is, uh, I'm happy to help, but I'm not sure what, what the city can do there, um.
Go ahead, Council, Councilwoman Lee, Mr. President?
I do have a meeting scheduled with Dr. Green, I'd love for you to join and, and Dr. Grzel as well, so, because we all share Lake Heiko and so we'll add you to that meeting.
I think that's a good place to start, but to the extent that the city can, can do anything to help the issue, then certainly I'd be glad to help.
Normally, we would invite our school board member.
Board two is vacant?
No, no, I'm talking about in three, and we just couldn't contact our school board member to fill us in and keep us informed.
Got you.
But, um, these are issues that, uh, citizens need to know about and as we try to call someone, uh, it's like Roblox being put up. And without a clear understanding what's taking place, then it's rumors that take place. And once rumors come out, it's all kind of things said in these neighborhoods. Uh, the pastor is the head of the Fern Edition Neighborhood Association, they have no knowledge. Uh, other communities around. Uh, other communities around the lake have no knowledge and people continue to call. Now, we don't want the schools to start thinking they're on an island by themselves and that they do not have to respond to, they do not have to respond to the citizens. You know, Jackson Public Schools has always been open and above board. And for citizens not to know everything that's taking place out there, it's the wrong direction to start to have a marriage between the schools and the City of Jackson through these neighborhoods. Thank you. Now, I know I very seldom make different meetings. I hope through that you'll go represent me in Ward Three and you'll know what questions to ask.
Be glad to. Councilman?
All right. Councilwoman Lee?
Um, have we finished with that discussion?
Yeah, did you have anything?
Uh, just one thing, just to make sure that we can emphasize information dissemination to the public. Make sure that the public is fully, fully informed. All right.
Before we move on to the next discussion item, we do have an emergency item. So I'd like to make an amendment to add um, an emergency item for the fire department to the agenda. Second.
This has been moved and property second that we add an order approving a professional service agreement with Sunbelt Fire Incorporated to perform required self-contained breathing apparatus fit testing for the Jackson Fire Department to the agenda. Any, uh,
So moved.
I mean, it's been moved a second. All in favor? I'm sorry.
Aye.
All right. That's unanimous. The item is now on the agenda. Would the clerk please get it on the floor?
Auto approving a professional service agreement with Sunbelt Fire Inc. to perform required self-contained breathing apparatus fit test for the Jackson Fire Department.
So moved. Second.
This has been moved and property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, I'm Mr. Stokes.
I want to take a second to thank the chief and all the firemen, five women, uh, for doing a wonderful job. You know, we went through, we're not quite through the winter. I know we're in the spring. But in the winter time, you have a whole lot of house fires, especially in poor neighborhoods. And they say people trying to stay warm. But I think our numbers are decreasing in terms of deaths, fire deaths. And until you see one of these fires close up with the trees burning and crackling and these old neighborhoods, wood, crackling and burning and neighbors afraid that their homes gonna catch fire and most cases neighbors homes gonna scorch or have some kind of damage. But these firemen must run toward the fire, not away from the fire. And somewhere down the line, we just got to start saying, thank you. Thank you for putting your life on the line and thank you for caring about this city. And I remember my time as being a supervisor in Heinz County. That's one of the most disappointing things that you find as being a county supervisor. People building million dollar homes and there's no fire department. Your house gets on fire, you wait for some volunteers to come. They might be at work, fishing, anything. By the time they get there, your house is gone. That makes no sense to me. I never have and I told the board supervisor that. So we got to learn how to appreciate our fire department. Because once they gone, if they not there and you need a fireman, you can understand how important it is that you have a fire department. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item carries unanimously. Now we're down to, uh, discussion item twenty-five. Councilman Stokes, Capitol Police?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. President, I want to tie in on, on the Capitol Police, the hempier construction, the State Street and High Street, uh, situation because Capitol Police is part of that area. I seen them, they're doing some work. Mr. Lee, and I don't know exactly what it is. I don't know if it's sewer.
Barbara Lee, City Engineer, that is a C C I D project. I think it's north of about twenty million dollars. And what the state's gonna do is reconstruct State Street from Capitol Street, fortification, water, sewer, drainage, pavement, everything, all that in a bag of chips.
Who's paying for it?
The state through the C C I D fund.
Well, let me, let me, because I'm still shocked about the state. Uh, the, uh, Capitol Police getting paid more than our police officer. But let me leave that alone for a second. My concern is that within ninety plus days, the territory for Capitol Police will expand. Um, Mr. Wright and others, we need to know the boundaries of the expansion. Where it's gonna span to who's currently not being affected by Capitol Police that will. One thing about Jackson Police is the sensitivity that has been shown over the years with the senior citizens. In the poor neighborhoods, a lot of people sixty, late fifties and seventies might not have driver license. They don't go there for they take mama to the store. Those kind of things to the doctor. They not driving a lot of places. But in most case, they don't have driver's license. With Capitol Police, you go through a lot of roadblocks. These people are poor. They do not have money to pay these tickets. Now that's the next issue, Legal. If Capitol Police ran tickets in Jackson, why is not the municipal courts handling this situation and getting that tax money? But we'll do that another day. The main issue is that we need to prepare people for what's coming with Capitol Police. In terms of how they police, the sensitivity that we see with Jackson Police Department, we need that same kind of sensitivity. Don't just write tickets to people just because you have that authority. We understand discretion. You don't have to write a ticket to a grandmama who not doing anything wrong, just trying to go to the store and back home, but might not have driver's license or insurance. You know, somewhere down the line, a hundred dollars to them is something they don't have. They can't pay a hundred dollar ticket. They buying medicine. They got utilities. They just trying to survive. So we don't want ninety days to come and go, then people see Capitol Police with roadblocks. Let's start now, letting them know the boundaries. If you haven't seen Capitol Police, you finna send them in your neighborhood now. And we hear people saying we want to feel safe. And we hear them saying if Thundering and Bear Haven have Capitol Police, we want them to. We hear all those things. But at the same time, we said, do not over police. Do not treat everybody, lump everybody the same. Understand some of these poor people, they don't have the money for tickets. They don't have the money to have a brand new car. They drive Humpty's, trying to get them fixed, but they are good citizens for this community. So again, I'm just hoping that the expansion will not be a nightmare. So boundaries is important. Boundaries are important. We'll have a meeting Thursday at the Mayor's Library. Hope we can get someone there. We invited Capitol Police to come here today to give us an idea of where the boundaries will be, where they're spanning to. And I am more and more concerned about the numbers with Capitol Police. They're slowly as high as our police department. So where's the legislation to stop the growth? Are we gonna allow Capitol Police to have five hundred officers, a thousand? The legislature got to say some numbers of the House and the Senate. They got to say something to say, look, we're not looking for a police department in Jackson larger than Jackson. We're trying to get some help. And as one gentleman stated, the sheriff department is number one police agency in this city. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. Councilwoman Lindsay?
Thank you. Um, Legal, if it's possible, I would like for the council to get a memo, please, explaining all the ways that the Capitol Police, um, jurisdiction will change come July one. I think it's, might be more than just boundaries. Um, but I'm, I would just like to get that really clear.
Yeah. Uh, Mayor?
Yes. Um, and, you know, I want to keep in mind that there really is still litigation, uh, on these matters. But, uh, what's supposed to happen July one, uh, which, uh, is, is going to affect the city in multiple ways is that they're supposed to take calls, uh, for the first time. Uh, Capitol Police, as they are currently constructed, uh, they, their calls are related, are, are, um, passed through the J P D nine-one-one dispatch service. Uh, and so they're supposed to have their own call, call center. Uh, in my discussions with Chief Wade, uh, that seems to, uh, be behind schedule and likely, um, won't be ready on time. Uh, and so for the benefit of those people that they're supposed to be serving, we want them to know that that's behind, uh, time. Uh, we'll, we'll likely have to fill in the gap, uh, but we want them to know that that transition, the prayer is that there is no, no lag or, or no, um, inability to get to their service area. But we want to make people aware of that. So, so you are correct that it is more than just the jurisdictional lines. It's, uh, the ancillary or, or support services that, um, that have to be done. Uh, forgive me for my tardiness. I am not feeling the best. It's nothing contagious. I, I'm just having sinus issues and this is something that I haven't dealt with before. Um, but, uh, we will make sure that you have all of the information that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Banks, just as a mere follow-up, just
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I do want to say that, um, that I, that, that Capitol Police have, that the Capitol Police officers have been very helpful in, in some of the areas of my ward. And, and I understand that they are working well with J P D and at this time. And so I, I am grateful to the assistant, for the assistance that they have provided J P D in helping us resolve some of the really terrible issues where we were having in my ward. And so, um, I, I do though want to be very clear about, I need to understand exactly all the ways this is gonna change. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One other thing that, that I forgot to mention that you should be aware of is that the Capitol, first of all, um, I, I think that, that there, we should commend J P D because they, uh, they go above and beyond to work with any and, and every, um, agency that, that they come into contact with. And so they're going to make it work regardless of the politics, regardless of the other issues. They're going to make that happen. Uh, but the other thing that you should be aware of that is also a, a further question is just jurisdictional boundaries. So the Capitol Police will not enforce city ordinances. So any ordinance that this body has either passed, will pass, uh, the expectation is that, the should be that they will not enforce that. They are not a, uh, an arm of the city. Um, and so when it comes to noise ordinances, when it comes to, uh, things of that nature.
What, what about the ones we decriminalized?
Say that again?
The ones we decriminalized. Remember when we decriminalized?
Oh, no, no, then they, they will, they are going to abide by state statute in, in all of their work, period. They, they will not be held to any decisions of the, the city uh, because state, state law supersedes and they are an arm of the state.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Um, I do want to be very clear about this. In, in no way do I underappreciate J P D. My first call is always to J P D. Um, and they have been incredibly responsive, super professional. Uh, I think you all know how happy I am about Chief Wade's appointment, Mr. Mayor. And so I, I, I am, I just want to be very clear though that this is in, in my area, certain, certain parts of my ward, this partnership has been fruitful and, and I appreciate it.
Yeah. No, and I want to be clear that, that my comments were not to suggest that you in any way did not value J P D. I just, just wanted to take that moment, uh, just by comparison so that our residents know. Uh, J P D, their call volume, the, 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 the things that they're dispatched to are still about ten to one. Meaning they do ten times the work that, that, uh, Capitol Police or any other agency in the City of Jackson does. Uh, and that's, that's per my discussions with the district attorney. Uh, and so I want people to have a, a, a perspective and a scope of what this looks like. Um, but no, I was not trying to, to suggest that in any way.
Yeah. Mr. President? Yeah, yeah, hold on. Mr. Stokes, before you go, I, just, just this question. Um, just based on what you just said, um, because there and now the state has taken away our ability to legislate and, and to deal with our own ordinances. If, if what you're saying is what is, I mean, then it's basically just snatched our legislative authority away when it comes to ordinances uh, that our constituents elected us into office to make sure we're on the books either one way or the other. And, and so I, you know, I, I wonder if there's some room there. You know, it's not that I don't appreciate Capitol Police. I appreciate them. I appreciate, uh, uh, the visibility. Visibility is your number one deterrent. I will always say that. However, when this body has, you know, based on its citizenry, uh, enacted certain legislation like the decriminalization of marijuana, uh, when, when it has enacted certain legislation and now that legislation does not have to be abided for, then in essence, what the state has done is taken away our legislative authority to have any laws on the books, especially if they're gonna be within our city. So I wonder if there's a legal remedy or something that we could talk to at some point when it comes to the nature of just that.
Well, I, I would say that that's more than likely a conversation for executive session.
Yeah.
There, there is, as I said at the start of this discussion, that there is still pending litigation. Uh, and it, it, you know, it's dealing with a number of things. It's not just the question of those who do or don't want Capitol Police. It's the judicial system that is attached, where the cases go to. It's this question that you now raise. Uh, it's a, you know, it gets into equal protection questions. It gets into, um, you know, voter rights questions, uh, based on the, the, um, uh, court system that, that is being proposed. Um, so that's, all of those questions have surfaced, more will surface, but I would suspect that your questions now are in executive session question to see what the city, uh, feels that, you know, whether it, it could be done just by conversation or agreement or legislation or whether, uh, some other avenues need to be pursued.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, the, uh, the climate in certain neighborhoods in this city, is at a stage of concern, especially since the goon squad situation over in Rankin County. And some of the citizens need to be assured that Capitol Police and the goon squad mentality will not exist in Jackson. And we got to say it, you know, it's a lot of pussy fucking around with the issues. But we got to tell what these people are saying and what they scared of. They need to come out and meet with communities. Capitol Police need to come out, talk to people and let people know we expanding, we're gonna have roadblocks. Man, we see all these high speed chases. People are in danger. You got a high speed chase, somebody that's seventy years old, they panic, they stir the wrong way and get killed, get run over. You know, somewhere down the line, it's got to be a, a You know, somewhere down the line, it's got to be a, a meeting of the minds. And then secondly, poor people just do not have money to get out of jail. Capitol Police have access to different jails. Somebody who would normally, an older person, somebody who really shouldn't be placed in, in jail, it's finna go to jail when they get pulled over now. If they not legitimate in terms of having their paperwork and license and other things, somebody need to come to these communities, tell us, and make sure that you have the criminals and not these good citizens who just trying to survive and been in Jackson all their life. Somebody need to assure these citizens that you not finna become an accident. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Item twenty-six is review and continuation of COVID-19 local emergency. I think that we always have to make sure that we are aware. Item, before we go to item twenty-seven, item twenty-eight, if the clerk would just read it for us to have a brief acknowledgement.
What's twenty? I don't have that on the table.
Monthly financial reports. It's our acknowledgement that we receive.
Month, monthly financial reports as required according to sections twenty-one dash thirty-five dash thirteen of the Mississippi Code annotated of nineteen seventy-two.
All right. If, if everybody would just state by eye for the record that you received. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. Let, let the record reflect that that report has been received by this body. Do we have announcements before we go? Yes, sir.
Councilmember, I will defer to councilmembers if they.
Okay. Council, Council Vice President?
In my opening statement, I recognized councilwomen that led the charge before me. I did not recognize Marsha Weaver. I wanted to make sure I did acknowledge her.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Could we close in honor of Ms. Jennifer Gale, Ms. Charlotte Scott, Mr. Jimmy Rackhouse Brown, Mrs. Sylvester Collins?
Thank you. All right, that's it. Any other?
President?
Yes, sir. Councilman Brazil?
Great. Thank you. Colleagues, everyone, I'm having a, we're hosting a crime and safety summit tonight at six PM at Grove Park Community Center. I've invited Heinz County Sheriff's Office, Jackson Police Department, Capitol Police Department, Heinz County DA's office, and I think a few others. And we're just gonna come out and have a meaningful conversation about, you know, look at crime stats and where we are with the uptick and, and, and the, how crime is moving throughout the city. So you all are invited, and hopefully we'll have a really robust conversation this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. First, Roll Off Dumpster Day is Saturday, April thirteenth, from eight AM to three PM at the Metro Center Mall Dillard's Parking Lot. Once again, that's April thirteenth from eight AM to three PM in the Dillard's Parking Lot. The First Annual Neighborhood Service, Services Division Planning Expo will be April, Saturday, April twenty-seventh at the Jackson Convention Complex. The city, the city's planning and development department is pleased to announce this particular expo. This event promises to be an engaging and informative platform for stakeholders from various sectors, including civic leadership, nonprofit organizations, businesses, community leaders, academia, and other planning professionals and practitioners. So we invite you to come. Once again, this is Saturday, April twenty-seventh, at the Jackson Complex, Convention Complex, from four PM to eight PM. Once again, that's from four PM to eight PM on April twenty-seventh. There has been a segment that we've been doing now for a while called Ask Antar that our, our communications department has started. This is an opportunity for residents who have questions that they want me to directly answer. You can submit your questions on the city of Jackson's website. And that is www.jacksonms.gov. There is an Ask Antar tab, and you can go there. We're thrilled to extend the invitation to college students. We'll be doing so on April eleventh at the Smith Robertson Museum. This will be a live Ask Antar. This event offers a chance for them to connect directly with me and express their concerns. And we look forward to not only their concerns, but their suggestions. They are valuable to us. Thank you.
All right. College, we have one more discussion item, pending litigation. In order to do that, we need a motion and second to go into executive, I mean, closed session.
So, Mr. President, I made that we go into closed session for the purposes of discussing going into actual executive session to discuss pending litigation.
So moved.
All right. It's been moved in property second by Council Vice President Lee that we go into closed session to discuss going into executive session.
Second.
Pending litigation.